And. On quite a.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Trustees, postponed from October 16th to today, October 23rd. I call everyone to order and Madam Secretary, Treasurer, Clerk, Treasurer, would you please take the role? You're on mute. Okay.
Yes, I'm muted or something. We're all on mute or something.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Sorry about that. Mayor Citron.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Lindsay.
Present.
Trustee Brooke.
Present.
Trustee Sarah.
Present via Zoom.
And Trustee Turner, he is out for the record.
Thank you. Oh, may we rise for the pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. So before we begin the regular meeting, we do have a public hearing on the proposed introductory local law number two involving fences. So I have to read for legal purposes, the following. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the village board of the village of Tuxedo Park, Orange County, New York, on October 23rd, 2024 at 7:00 PM, or soon thereafter, as can be heard at the village of Tuxedo Park Village Hall, 80 Laurel Lot Road, Tuxedo Park, New York, 10987, to consider the adoption of a local law about fences. Said local law will be made available for review in the village clerk's office, 80 Laurel Lot, Tuxedo Park, New York, and may be examined after September 6th, 2024, by any interested party from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday. Please note that the date of this public hearing had previously been advertised as October 16th, but the date had been changed to October 23rd by order of the village board of the village of Tuxedo Park, Elizabeth Doherty Clerk. The local law was first discussed at a Board of Trustees meeting on May 22nd. It was formally introduced at a public hearing on June 26th. The public hearing was adjourned to July 17th, and on that date, it was formally canceled. So it could be revised to incorporate comments received from the public. At tonight's public hearing, we will be discussing the revised version of the fence law. With that said, I move that we open the public hearing. Be it resolved that the public hearing on introductory law number two of 2024, fences, begin. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by the deputy mayor. Any discussion on this? Hearing no discussion. All in favor? Aye. Unanimous four zero. Okay. Is there anyone present here in the room who would like to comment on the fence law? And let me note for the record, so everyone is aware of this, we will not vote on the final version of the fence law tonight. And the reason for that is the orange, the fence law does touch on a land use issue. And as such, the Orange County Planning Board must have an opportunity to comment on the law, and they are given 30 days to do so. So we will proceed with the public hearing. We will then discuss the issue of the environmental assessment form and SECRAT, to the extent that there is any involvement in that statute to this particular proposed law. And we will reserve the actual vote on the approval of the law to next month's meeting, so that the planning board will have the statutory 30-day time period to respond. And if they don't respond, that's essentially no comment, then we can proceed. If they respond, I'll report back to you what they have to say about the law. With that being said, anybody in the room wish to comment on the proposed law, which has been circulated since early September? And I mailed it to everybody in my mayor's message of that, of that month. Anybody on Zoom wish to comment as a member of the public on the proposed local law involving fences? Please raise your hand. Okay, seeing none. Be it resolved that we close this public hearing on the revised introductory local law number two of fences. I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Trustee Brooke. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. We have, we will continue discussing the local law as part of the regular business involving the environmental issues, to the extent that there are any. All right. That being said, we'll start the regular meeting, and I have a very short list of comments. I know the community is very concerned and interested in the issue of the Verizon cell tower. The proposal was made by the Verizon people back on September 30th. We received today a petition from the opponents of the cell tower, which purportedly has 81 residents signing, signing the petition. It is not on the agenda for tonight, but I want to announce that as per the request made at the September 30th meeting, Verizon will be conducting a leaves-off balloon test sometime in mid-November. That's when they will raise the balloon up to the height of the cell tower at the proposed side off Ridge Road. And I will advise everybody in the community of the date and time, so that you'll all be able to show up, take photographs, evaluate where the balloon is, when there are no leaves on the trees, and then we will continue this discussion at the following Board of Trustees meeting. So that's point one. Point two, as most of you are aware, Halloween is observed in the village. We will be observing it this year on Sunday, October 27th, between 3:30 and 6:30 PM, and it will be on Clubhouse Road, as is traditional. If there are any parents who wish to participate, by handing out candy, you can reach my chief of staff and wife, Sheila Trailins. She will be happy to work with you, and we'll try to get as many parents on that road as possible, with as much candy as possible, so that the kids can have a great time. So we're all looking forward to it, and we'll see you at 3:30 on Sunday, and the weather forecast is perfect. With that being said, I have to make another announcement as a matter of law. This is a recap of Tuxedo Park Pond Number Three Dam repairs. This project, and this is because of the earthquake back in April, which led to some concerns about leaks on the Pond Three Dam, was deemed to be emergency by the code enforcement officer, John Ledwith, and was therefore exempt from normal bidding rules. Two bids were received pursuant to the RFP, one by Expert Concrete Restoration and Repair, a 14 Spielman Road in Fairfield, New Jersey, in the amount of $10,897.73. There was a second bid received by Uratek, U-R-E-T-E-K, USA Inc., at 13900 Humboldt Road in Tomball, T-O-M-B-A-L-L, Texas, for $49,640. Eve Mancuso, Principal Engineer at Brooker Engineering, a division of our village engineer, Weston and Sampson, explained that the ECCR, which is the bid itself by Expert Concrete Restoration and Repair, did not account for prevailing wages, which is required by state law. The contractor has agreed to update the bid amount accordingly, which will increase the bid. However, even with this adjustment, the bid amount will be substantially lower than the other bid received. And this bid is for work to do injection mortaring into the dam. The water level will be lowered on Pond Three, and the company will inject mortar into the dam to make it sturdier, and that should resolve any issue we have as a result of the damage that may have occurred as a result of the earthquake that we all experienced in April. Thank you. Trustees, any comment? Deputy Mayor?
No.
Trustee Brooke, any comment?
Nope.
Trustee Sarah, any comment?
None.
Okay, members of the public present, anyone wish to make public comment? Any members of the public have anything they'd like to say? Yes. Ms. Tease?
Aye.
Aye. Please take the microphone. We've got it working.
I just, anytime we do anything with the water, I'm increasingly alarmed at the state of the health of the water in our lakes. And so I was just wondering if there was an opportunity while the water was being lowered to evaluate or do any other sort of testing on the water that wouldn't necessarily be able to do when it's at full height?
Well, well, first let me respond by saying, of course, the water in Pond Three is not drinking water.
Right.
Okay, drinking water is Tuxedo Lake, and that's our reservoir. And this project will not affect our drinking water. With respect to the quality of the water in Tuxedo Lake, Pond Number Three, and the Weewa, we have retained GEI consultants to do a full water survey of all three lakes. Once that report comes to us, probably in January, we will distribute it to the public.
I think.
Oh, that's, Trustee Sarah has a comment.
No, and we evaluate the water quality annually, like that is not a one-off report. So we have reports from prior years, and just to be clear, the water quality of our reservoir is, is, is high. And so there shouldn't be any concerns about the water quality of the reservoir.
My concern is that, my understanding is that 20 feet down in the lake is dead, because it's not receiving proper aeration, because
Yes. Yes.
difficulties with maintaining a high level of environmental support around the lake and with some of the choices that we've made long-term as a community. So I'm just wondering, anytime we're touching our water, if there were opportunities to better evaluate how we can bring back the help of Tuxedo Lake in particular.
So, so it sounds like you would be a great volunteer for the Lakes Committee. This is a topic of conversation that we discuss on a regular basis. And Jim Hayes leads that committee. I, he is always looking for passionate volunteers. If you want to reach out to me, I'm happy to connect you with Jim. I'm actually the Lakes liaison, specifically with respect to the anoxic levels in the lake. They have been creeping up over time. It's, it is a big concern for us. In part, because if that dead, dead zone reaches our intake pipes, we're gonna have some pretty smelly tap water. And so we are looking at ways to fix the problem. There are no inexpensive ways to do it. As you alluded to, our behavior as a community has created the problem over time. It's people using fertilizers. There's also natural sources, you know, like yeast poop that, you know, creates the issue over time. But we are looking at through, with GEI, which consulting, which is our Lakes manager, add an aeration system that would get oxygen down and circulating into, into the lake, and hopefully start to rectify and reverse some of the damage that's been done. But again, we'd love to have you on the committee. We're always looking for passionate volunteers.
I would be very interested. I'm a mere artist, but my ex-husband was a specialist in civil engineering, water type, water habitat restoration, so I have a little bit of knowledge about how terrified I am about the quality of our lake water right now.
Okay, well, I'm an investment banker, so I think you're better qualified than I am. Welcome.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody on Zoom have public comment? First round of public comment. We have a hand raised by CPM. Could you identify yourself beyond your initials?
Yeah, yes, this is, this is Chris Mahan from 81 Ridge Road. So I was on, on, not on video when, when I was listening. Thank you, Mayor, for acknowledging the petition that was delivered earlier today with respect to the cell tower. I would point out that there were, it was 181 people who signed it, not 81, as you said in your initial remarks.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I said 181. I apologize.
No, it's 181, not, not, not 81, which is relatively substantial a number of people, as I think we would all know, given the size of our community. I think it's, 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 thank you for organizing the leaf-off balloon test. I think one of the things that, you know, consistent with the standards we'd apply to other projects, there have been, you know, there's a series of visualization rules that have been put in place with respect to the bridge line in how you conduct a visualization photo simulation study. And I think it would behoove the village to require Verizon to comply with those, those requirements that we would have for Ridgeline, including, you know, you know, photo simulation showing the impact of the 30 by 70 clearing that they would have to make as part of this project, because they'd have to, they, they said they would have to clear that space of trees to facilitate that, and we should have a photo simulation of what that would look like, in addition to what the balloon would show from a height perspective. And I would also ask the village if we're doing anything to independently try to find if, if there are other alternatives that we could encourage Verizon to, to, to use as opposed to the location that's right in the middle of a residential community. And, and, and are we independently, as opposed to relying on Verizon, looking at alternatives where we might have a solution that's more beneficial for the entire, you know, for the community at large, without specific, some of the specific impacts that are happening here? And those are my questions and comments.
Okay. With, with respect to the alternative sites, yes, we're looking at alternative sites, one, one of which, as was discussed at the September 30th meeting, and that was on Potucket. There was some, the initial Verizon response was not particularly positive after they went to look at it. That site, of course, is privately owned. It is not village property, but that's not Verizon's issue. That's our issue. So we'll continue to explore this with them. I just want everybody to understand, because in speaking to people after the meeting, there, there was concern that this was going to be pushed through in 30 or 60 days. And I want to assure you that due consideration will be given to this, and the process will not take, will not occur overnight or in the course of a month or even two months. We want everybody to get a chance to give us their feedback on their thoughts, and we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna take, move forward with due deliberation with regard to everyone's concerns. So that's my response to you, Mr. Mahan, with respect to any questions you may have put to the board at this point. Chi Yan, you, you had your hand up?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor. I, I don't want to comment on the specifics of the Verizon proposal, but I'd like to sort of step back and ask three questions related to village governance issues. The first question is, I know that the Board of Trustees have always relied on expert advice when it comes to critical infrastructure projects. You have AJ in his firm to advise you on lake health, and you have Weston and Sampson to advise you on dams and sewers. Do you have a qualified independent telecoms expert to advise you on telecoms issues, particularly since it is a very complex area with broad implications? And because telecommunications technology moves so quickly? To give you an example, T-Mobile, Mayor Yor carrier, T-Mobile and Starlink are planning to launch a satellite-based direct-to-cell service later this year. And meanwhile, they were given temporary emergency authorization to offer this service during Helen and Milton, um, the hurricanes. The technology does not require any special equipment other than a cell phone and a T-Mobile plan. An independent telecom advisor will likely be able to advise us if this tower, so-called tower in the sky technology may just really be a pie in the sky, or if the solution for those residents in Tuxedo Park who don't have good cell service could be as simple as switching carrier. My second question is, construction projects undertaken by the village government that impact on publicly visible aesthetics have always gone before the relevant local boards for review to gain consensus and to cultivate goodwill within the community. The most recent examples are the gate police boost and reconstruction of the Elephant Drain at the Tuxedo Road entrance to the nature preserve, the text, the racetrack preserve. Given this long-honored tradition, why should any telecoms installation anywhere in the village be allowed to bypass local board review? Specifically, as Chris Mahan noted, with the proposed Ridgeline, the Ridgeline site, it is in the heart of the Ridgeline Zone as defined by the Ridgeline Presibus Local Law enacted in 2009. I have the honor of serving as the chair of the committee that concert, that considered, designed, and put in place this law. The intent of the law is to protect the Ridgeline areas that are both environmentally sensitive and aesthetically central to the historic landscape of Tuxedo Park. To this end, the law specifies strict standards on materials, height, sighting, and preservation of trees, historical structure, and natural features, including rock, propings. The same law also stipulates a visual impact analysis, a tree survey, and a soil stability analysis, because construction activities and tree removal in the steep and rocky terrain of a Ridgeline area could cause erosion problems for neighboring properties. I hope Verizon will be required to observe our local laws and be asked to conduct the visual impact analysis, tree survey, and stores soil stability analysis in addition to the leaf-off balloon test that shows the effect of the 70-foot times 30-foot clearing around the proposed power tower where all the trees will be removed. These analyses are essential to protect our environment and the historical character of our village. My third question is, or observation, you've just been presented with a petition signed by 181 residents, including four former trustees and all four former mayors still residing in the village. I think this is quite an overwhelming referendum, given that only some 200 people, and often many fewer, vote in any village election. To be clear, the petitioners, we're not opponents. We want better cell service, but we want to achieve this important goal in a planful and thoughtful manner. We hope the Board of Trustees will, as the petitioners ask, declare a moratorium for an appropriate period of time, to be, the timing to be determined by you, so that you can expand the telecoms committee to include an independent qualified expert who understands wireless technology, and also a resident who understands infrastructure leasing, which is a specialist business and not just another real estate transaction. The committee can then get knowledgeable and impartial advice on the Verizon proposal, research the latest wireless technology, including the satellite-based service, contact other carriers to see what they have to offer, and then, and also importantly, enact a much-needed local law. I hope the village will not jump at the first offer that comes through the gates. A Verizon tower only benefits Verizon customers, not every resident, and it would be at the heavy expense of immediate neighbors. If we allow the Verizon tower, how could we possibly refuse a Sprint or AT&amp;T in the absence of a local telecoms law if they don't want to lease space on the Verizon tower but set up their own? Would Tuxedo Park then become Cell Towels Park? On behalf.
I think we're, Chi Yan, I think we're six minutes and counting. We.
I, I know, but Mayor, I, it is my time. I'd like to finish my last sentence, if I may.
Oh, of course.
On behalf of many property owners, I implore you to listen to our concerns and suggestions in the petition. Your role as elected stewards of our community requires no less. Thank you for considering my comments.
Thank, thank you, Chi Yan. The telecom issue is not on the agenda tonight, so I'm not going to give you a response tonight to what you phrase as questions. However, obviously, we're going to discuss everything you put forward in, in your comments in the future. But we appreciate them. They're on record, and we'll move forward from that. Is there anybody else who wishes to make a public comment? It's open to anyone on any issue. Okay, seeing no hands, we'll close the initial public comment period, and we'll move on to reports. The court report is included as a paper record, so we turn to Police Chief Alan Faust.
Good evening. The police department responded to 140 calls for the month. We had five criminal cases. One closed by investigation, made three arrests, one traffic arrest, three property name and dodo accidents, 10 warnings were issued, four fire alarms, three medical calls, assisted the town of Tuxedo Police on three occasions, and they also assisted us on three other occasions. We patrolled 2,528 miles and added approximately 857 vehicles per day coming through the village.
Thank you, Chief. I understand that you've received law enforcement grants, and you want to use them to upgrade the cameras. Could you tell us a little bit about that?
We did, yes. We received from the law enforcement technology grant approximately $14,350, which could help for media fix to some of our camera issues at this time.
Okay, and have you had a chance, I know Trustee Turner is not here, have you had a chance to get together with him and the other members of the, of the Security and Gate Committee?
Yes, we, we had a meeting. We're definitely gonna need to have one more and where we come up with some final suggestions for the board.
Okay, so we'll look forward to that in November. Thank you. Thank you so much, Chief. Deputy W supervisor, Jeff Boss, please.
Oh, for the last month, we've patched potholes, blacktopped goatherd on Cliff Road, worked on some equipment, international dump truck, got our leaf machine ready, mowed grass throughout the village, worked with Chris Gao on removing invasive vines on the causeway on Tuxedo Road, and also at the intersection of Westlake and Eagle Mountain Road. Weed whacked various roads throughout the village, steam cleaned boat trailers for boats to be taken out of the water for the season. We repaired a storm drain head wall on Ontio Road. We've installed, replaced a few 12-inch drain pipes, one on Pine Hill Road, two on Laurel Road, and one on Ridge Road, and also installed new catch basins on the two pipes on Laurel Road. We weed whacked Pond Three Dam embankment, and we trimmed back the grasses at the intersection of Tuxedo Road and Ontio after some complaints from residents that visibility was poor, so we trimmed that down. Cut and cut grass and blue leaves at Weewa Park. Cleaned up a large tree on East Lake Stable Road last week that was cut down by Orange and Rockland. Worked with Sterling Carding on Bolt Pickup. Pulled leaves off the Ridge Road Triangle and the Triangle by Tuxedo Club. Installed a new signpost at the top of Pepper's Road for water and sewer. The last month has been busy with water main breaks and waterline repairs. We replaced an eight-inch watergate valve at the top of Clubhouse and Tower Hill Road. We repaired a one-inch water line on Patterson Hill Road downtown. Repaired a four-inch water main break on School Out Lane downtown. Obviously, everybody knows about the one we fixed by Tuxedo Club yesterday. Responded to resident on Westlake Road after a water pressure complaint and found that they had a filter that they were unaware of that hasn't been changed in years, so that was their, their issue with water pressure. Also obtained more water pressure readings on Crow's Nest Road for the ongoing problem up there. One water meter was repaired in the East Village. We had an issue at the sewer plant with one of our clarifier tanks. There are two. And there's some mechanical equipment in there that failed. And we're able to run on one, especially with, you know, as dry as it's been, the flow is way down anyway. But we'll have to be making repairs to that now. But, uh, we'll have to be making repairs to that and ordering some parts for it. Um, we also installed a new battery backup for the equipment at the sewer plant. We met with, uh, homeowner at eighty-six Potucket Road to investigate a water meter issue. We also marked out the water mains on Route seventeen, uh, installed some new, uh, GFI outlets at the sewer plant. And like I mentioned before, the work on the clarifier tank at the sewer plant, we've been, it's been an ongoing thing.
Uh, I understand. Are we expecting the screens for the water plant this week perhaps?
I reached out to them a week ago. They're scheduled to be shipped either this Thursday or Friday, so they're expected, uh, next week.
So the fingers crossed worked. It looks like we're going to get through with one of the two filters, right? Okay, um, a couple of things. I understand that one of our longtime employees is retiring and we have to fill his position. Uh, do you need the assistance of the board in finding a replacement? Um, how, how are we going to go about this? Because.
I think we're gonna have to advertise because the word's been out for over a month now that, and retiring. And usually I have people that'll come to me and it really hasn't happened yet.
Yeah, I understanding is this is not a position that requires civil service exam? Is, is that, is that true? There's no list, so to speak. We don't pick from a list. No, we just try to hire the most experienced person we can get.
Right.
Okay, well, we're, we're gonna have to move on that, John and Elizabeth. We gotta find somebody who's leaving December first, but he may be taking vacation and may be out of here by the middle of November.
End of November.
End of November, okay. Um, and another thing is, um, at Wewa, um, I noticed that, that the boats, the, I assume they're village-owned boats, um, um, are, are still out. And I've also seen people taking them out onto the lake. Would it be possible for the DPW to put them in a truck and bring them to your, uh, to your, uh, storage yard and leave them there rather than keeping them out there? I'm very concerned about people willy-nilly taking, taking the craft out until the, the, it's too cold, unsupervised and possibly suffering a horrific accident.
Wouldn't be a problem.
Okay, because I, I've seen it. I walk my dogs there and I see people grabbing those boats and carrying them to the water and then going, excuse me, going off into Wewa. Okay.
Well, one other thing I, I would like to mention about Wewa, um, probably the end of the month, we're gonna shut the water off and close the bathroom for the season just so we don't have any freeze-ups or anything.
Okay, last, last request. There, there are two flags on the pole. One is the US flag. The other one is the Wewa Beach Club flag. That flag should be taken down because it's starting to tatter. It won't survive the winter. No reason to buy another one, so you can leave the US flag up.
Aren't they supposed to have a light on them?
If they're not lit at night, they should come down.
Okay, well.
It doesn't make sense to leave them up over the winter.
Okay, I appreciate it. Anything from the, from the trustees for Supervisor Boss?
No, I just want to thank you for that work on, uh, opening up the Vista, uh, along the causeway. I think that looks great. Yeah.
Okay, thanks so much. Appreciate it. Okay, John, you're up.
Uh, yes, we had, uh, three requests for certificate of occupancies in the last, uh, thirty to forty days. So there is still, uh, some sales activity that's occurring, uh, during the fall. Uh, we have approximately a dozen projects that are in various stages of, uh, work, uh, with no, no incidents. Uh, we did submit a violation notice to the owner of fifty Crow's Nest Road, and, uh, they appear to be willing to work with us and meet with us regarding, uh, what has to be done. Uh, we do have some active, active applications before the Board of Zoning Appeals. Uh, the BZA meets, uh, November sixth, uh, to hear an application, uh, from a new owner at, uh, thirty-seven Fox Hill Road. And, uh, we do have one issue. The BAR approved the extensive landscaping plan at four fifty-seven Westlake Road. I emailed you something earlier this morning. Sorry for the lateness of the email. But part of the plan is they're going to be removing an invasive species, phragmities. Uh, they submitted a plan on how they wish to do that. And my recommendation is that we forward that to the Lakes Manager to get his comments, um, and, uh, and go forward with that.
Josh?
Yeah, that totally makes sense. Let's make sure AJ agrees with, uh, how they plan to get rid of the phragmities because, John, as you know, you can make the situation worse if you don't do it right.
Correct. So, uh, with the board's approval tomorrow, I'll forward the, uh, plan to the Lakes Manager for his review.
We don't need a formal vote on that. Everybody agrees? Yeah, sure. Okay, great. Thanks, John.
Uh, nothing else to report.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Um, the Water Department is attached to the record. The Treasury reports are attached to the record. Uh, Deputy Mayor, do you have any updates you want to, uh, give us on Climate Smart? Anything that's safe in place?
Yes, um, as you know, we submitted, uh, all, all our paperwork for, uh, certification as a Climate Smart Community. And we received notification from NYSERTA that all of our actions have been approved. And this week at a meeting of Orange County Climate Smart Committees, our liaison at NYSERTA told us it could take up to six weeks for us to be notified officially of being certified. And after that, we would, we expect our initial award of twenty thousand dollars for clean energy upgrades.
Thank you so much. That was great work that you did with, uh, great work, you and Ms. Bucktari at the very end helping out to get it in timely. Elizabeth, of course, Elizabeth, too. Sorry. All right, thanks, guys. All right, uh, so that concludes the report. So, uh, be it resolved that the board add all written reports to the permanent record. I've made the motion. Do I have a second? Second by trustee Brooke. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, okay, carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes, uh, of September eighteenth and September thirtieth special meeting. Um, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees approve the minutes from the following meetings, September eighteenth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting, September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four special meeting. I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by the Deputy Mayor. All in, uh, any comment or discussion? No changes. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. All right, next resolution is the Halloween resolution. Um, as I mentioned in my opening remarks, be it resolved to approve the formal observance of Halloween on Sunday, October twenty-seventh from three thirty PM to six thirty PM and the deployment of two police officers to supervise the children, their parents and to ensure safety. I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Okay.
Second by trustee Brooke. Any discussion on Halloween? Okay, hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Josh?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, now we move on to the Pond Three Dam Resolution, which I also, I read the legal notice in my mayor's comments. Uh, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees authorize the mayor to sign a contract with expert concrete restoration and repair in the amount of ten thousand nine dollars and forty cents plus additional charges for the prevailing wage to repair Pond Three Number Dam. I'll make the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Deputy Mayor. Any discussion on the, the proposals, either one? Any, any members of the board have any problems with it?
Nope.
Okay, uh, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, passes unanimously. All right, the next time I'm on the agenda, I just want to address briefly the Village Boat Club license. Trustee Brooke and I, uh, discussed, uh, the license. Uh, trustee Brooke made some recommendations. I made some recommendations. And we met with, um, the president and the vice president of the, I met with the vice president, the president of the Village Boat, Boat Club several weeks ago, uh, here in this room. And we went over the proposed agreement. We requested certain modifications, which they agreed to. I asked them to send the final version because it was their word document. I followed up with a request, uh, by email to Mr. Libby on Friday saying, where's the document? I'd like to get this done by the, by the meeting on Wednesday. I have not yet received the document, so unfortunately, until the Boat Club prepares and submits to me for distribution to the board, the final draft of the lease agreement, we have to table this matter, so we'll move on. Any comment by anyone on this point?
No.
No, okay. Now we move on, um, to the, the issue of the fence law. Um, the first issue is, uh, under the, under SECR and the, which is the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act. Uh, one of the boards in the village has to declare itself to be the lead agency for the purpose of the environmental review. Since this is a Board of Trustees issue and the Board of Trustees will ultimately either approve or disapprove this proposed law, we will be the leadish, the lead agency for the purpose of SECR. So, uh, with respect to the Environmental Quality Review Act, I have to read a rather long, um, paragraph. Uh, it's actually more than a paragraph, um, which I'm going to read now into the record. Whereas the New York State Environmental Conservation Law and the Regulations of the Department of Environmental Conservation as contained in six New York Code of Rules and Regulations, Part six seventeen require review of the possible environmental consequences of various actions under consideration by the Board of Trustees. And whereas the Board of Trustees is considering the adoption of a proposed local law to provide for comprehensive regulation for fences throughout the Village of Tuxedo Park. And whereas the Board of Trustees has considered the nature and impact of the proposed action. And whereas the Board of Trustees has reviewed a short environmental assessment form prepared with respect to the proposed law. Now, therefore, it is resolved that the board hereby finds and concludes that the Board of Trustees is the lead agency with respect to the environmental impact review of the proposed local law to provide for a comprehensive regulation of fences. And A, the proposed adoption of the local law is an unlisted action under SECR. There are three types of actions under SECR. There's a type one, a type two and unlisted. Type one are major projects, type two are minor projects, and type three is everything else, which includes, uh, uh, legislation regarding something as innocuous environmentally as fences. So the board has reviewed, thoroughly reviewed the short environmental assessment form and the supplemental description of the proposed action. The board has considered the following factors and made the following conclusions in respect to its review of the environmental impacts of the proposed action. The proposed action, which is defense law, would not result in any substantial adverse change in existing air quality, ground or surface water quality or quantity, traffic or noise levels, nor any substantial increase in solid waste production, nor create a substantial increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, leaching or drainage problems. The proposed action would not result in the removal or destruction of large quantities of vegetation or fauna, substantial interference with the movement of any resident or migratory fish or wildlife species, impacts on significant habitat areas, substantial adverse impacts on a threatened or endangered species of animal or plant or the habitat of such species or other significant adverse impacts to natural resources. The proposed action would not impair the environmental characteristics of any critical environmental area. The proposed action would not conflict with the community's current plans or goals as official, officially approved or adopted. The proposed action would not impair the character or quality of the important historical, archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources or of existing community or neighborhood character. The proposed action would not result in a major change in the use of either the quantity or type of energy. The proposed action would not create a hazard to human health. The proposed action would not create a substantial change in the use or intensity of use of land, including agricultural, open space or recreational resources, or in its capacity to support existing uses. Proposed action would not encourage or attract large numbers of persons to any place for more than a few days compared to the number who would come to such place without an action. The proposed action would not create changes in two or more elements of the environment, none of which would have a significant impact on the environment, but when taken together would, would not result in a substantial adverse impact on the environment. The proposed action would not create substantial adverse impacts when considered cumulatively with any other actions, either proposed or in process. The proposed action would not result in substantial adverse impact with respect to any relevant environmental consideration, including noise, aesthetics, traffic, air quality, water quality or adequacy of water supply, drainage, soil conditions or quality of life in the community in general and the immediate neighborhood in particular. The proposed action would enhance the protection of the environment in the village in that it would preserve and maintain the existing character of the village. The proposed action would not have any significant adverse environmental impact. No further environmental review is required with respect to the proposed action. And the mayor is authorized to execute the short environmental assessment form in a manner consistent with the foregoing findings, concluding that the proposed action will not result in significant adverse environmental impact. Do we need a resolution for this, Brian? Is he here? Brian?
Yeah, I'm here.
Uh, do, do I need to make a resolution after reading all of that?
You, you effectively just did. You're, you're asking, you're, you're moving that resolution.
Okay, um.
I just, I do want to clarify one thing. I think you, you said type three before instead of unlisted. Just, I, I know, I know you meant unlisted, but, uh, it, it is unlisted.
I said type one and type two and then unlisted, and this is.
Okay, I thought I heard type three. Sorry.
I don't think so, but that's okay. All right, all, all in favor of the environmental findings as I read?
We have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
We have a, sorry, trustee Brooke is the second. All in favor of, of the environmental findings that said, set forth in the, in the, in what I just read, uh, please say aye.
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 Aye, okay. Uh, as I said, we're not going to vote on the actual law itself because we have to wait for an Orange County Planning Board, uh, comment, and if no comment comes in before the next board meeting, we can put it on the agenda and have a, have an up or down vote. So we will table the, the resolution, uh, for, to actually adopt the local law. All right, um, next item on the agenda is, um, uh, request permission from the County of Orange for exemption from county taxation, uh, in the year twenty twenty-six. Uh, be resolved that the Village of Tuxedo Park requests permission from the County of Orange for the exemption from county taxation in the year twenty twenty-six on certain real property, SBL, uh, two-one-three, uh, block and lot number two-one-three dash three dash twelve located in the town of Tuxedo for the use of the Village of Tuxedo Park water system. I'll make the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by the Deputy Mayor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Next item on the agenda, uh, the change to fall policy relating to employee disciplinary records is apparently a regulatory requirement, but we don't have a resolution yet, so we'll table it until the next meeting. There's no rush with respect to that. Uh, the next, uh, involves appointment to the BZA. As, uh, you may know, the BZA had a vacancy as a result of the resignation of John Boyle, who was moving out of, uh, the Village of Tuxedo Park. Uh, his resignation leaves a seat vacant that, for a term that runs through July of twenty twenty-six. The Board of Trustees, uh, for the public benefit, uh, solicited applications from any interested resident. We received two very qualified, uh, applications. The Board of Trustees interviewed the residents, uh, and, uh, I am prepared at this point to, uh, nominate one of the two applicants to the vacancy. Um, it is my intention tonight to nominate Charlotte Worthy of Clubhouse Road to fill the vacancy for the term ending in twenty twenty-six. Uh, I'm nominating Charlotte, who has extensive architectural experience as this, as an architect in, uh, her own firm. She has served the village in the past as a trustee. She has served the village in the past as a member of the bar, and she has exquisite experience when it comes to land use. And I believe that she will be a, 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 a major, uh, member on the, on the BZA. Uh, she will bring all her skills to the BZA and I look forward to her serving. And I put forward her nomination and I will do it by way of motion.
You just, Mayor, Mayor, it's your appointment subject to approval by the board, so the board would just have to move your, your appointment.
Yes, I understand. Yeah. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees appoint Charlotte Worthy to the Boardy, Board of Zoning Appeals to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Mr. Boyle. The term will end July twenty twenty-six. Um, so we'll, uh, do I need a second on that or just a vote of the board?
You do. You need a second.
Okay, do I have a second to that nomination?
I'll second.
Second by the Deputy Mayor. Uh, voice vote, all in favor. The mayor votes aye. Deputy Mayor?
Aye.
Trustee Sher?
Aye.
Aye, trustee Brooke?
Aye.
Aye, the vote is unanimous for nothing. Thank, uh, congratulations, uh, Charlotte. Next meeting for your information, in case you're listening to this, is November sixth. At what time do they start?
Seven P M.
Seven P M. Okay, thank you very much. All right. We move on now to audit of claims.
No, we have.
No, sorry. Oh, yeah, right. Okay, um, we have, uh, a bookkeeping, I guess I could describe it as a bookkeeping issue. We changed accounting systems. Uh, Elizabeth, would you be so good as to explain to the public what we had, what we got and what the, what the problem is in integrating the two?
Sure, so we were using QuickBooks Online and we moved to a desktop version of QuickBooks called Quick. Sure, so we were using QuickBooks Online, and we moved to a desktop version of QuickBooks called QuickBooks Enterprise. And, um, the big difference is that in QuickBooks Enterprise, there's a classification used called class. Um, that we hadn't previously previously used. And, um, uh, basically, the transition went smoothly. But there are some things that ended up not having a classification. And in this new program, it is essential for everything to have a classification. If it doesn't, then the reports really don't run properly, and the auditors are having problem finishing off the audit because of this. Uh, I don't think it's a difficult problem to fix, but I just don't know how to do it. So, uh, this company, VARC, um, I discussed it with them, and they seemed totally comfortable with it. They said, um, they can do it for us, but it's cost a hundred and seventy five dollars an hour. Or they can just walk me through it and show me how to do it, and I can do it. And then we just pay them for the time that they're training me, and we don't have to pay for the actual, uh, fixing of the problem. And so I I I think that would be absolutely fine, and I would prefer it cuz this way I would understand better the problem. So that if it ever happens again, I'd know how to fix it.
And and this relates to the required annual report that the.
It does, um, yeah, the audits, uh, the auditors audit our books every year, and we post that audit. Um, and they, it's it's holding them up. But, you know, the the other issue is just that the program just isn't set up properly because we have all of these. I don't mean the program's not set up properly, just the information, um, wasn't brought over properly, not all of it, just some of it. And it just has to be fixed. Whether it gets audited or not, it still has to be fixed.
Okay, so you're you're essentially requesting, uh, up to five hours of of support from this this firm, and you may use five, you may use something less, right?
Yeah, hopefully, they said to start out with, it would just be about two hours, and I'm hoping that's all I need, to be honest.
Okay, all right, then let me make this motion. Be resolved that the Board of Trustees authorized Clerk Treasurer Doherty to sign the Client Services Agreement from VARC, V A R C Solutions. For QuickBooks consulting services at a rate of one seventy five per hour. The clerk expects to need less than five hours of support from them. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Brooke. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, that passes.
So one, one question, um, Mayor, what? Is this type of expenditure really required, uh, for a vote? It just.
Uh. I.
Good question. Cuz it's not that high, actually, if you just do the one seventy five times two or three, but.
I'm I'm just curious for efficiency going forward.
Yeah, I was wondering about that, yeah.
Let me, let me, let me give you the short and skinny on my my belief, which is.
Yep.
It is that, is that, you know, these minor expenses generally do not require board approval and are simply signed off. Uh, by the trustees, uh, in, and we have a pile of vouchers to sign off. However, this, this is not an ordinary, uh, expense. This is an expense due to an issue relating to accounting, bookkeeping, and it extends beyond, uh, Elizabeth. To the auditors and to the Controller's office, who sent us an email saying, where's your report? So, under the circumstances, I think that it's appropriate that the board authorize this to make it clear. We're gonna, we're gonna fix this problem of accounting into software, and we're gonna move forward and and provide the state with what it wants.
Okay.
Is that all right?
Thank, no, it's great. Uh, thanks for the explanation.
Thanks, thanks. Okay, uh, audit of claims. Anything, Elizabeth?
Yes, uh, for the bills in the amount of a hundred fifty eight thousand, six hundred thirty three dollars and seventy cents were received for the general fund. Six thousand, six hundred sixty seven dollars and eighty eight cents for the sewer fund. And sixty eight thousand, sixty three dollars and sixty six cents for the water fund. And finally, three hundred forty eight dollars for the professional fees were audited and ordered paid. And that three hundred forty eight dollars is net, the bills, sorry, and the money that we recently received.
Okay, thanks. Um, uh, budget transfers?
Yes, I have two, um, one for the general fund, uh, from appropriated surplus. I'd like to transfer sixty thousand dollars to the Buildings Code. And in the Water Fund, I'd like to transfer thirty thousand dollars from the Source of Supply Contractual to Purification Contractual. And just a word of explanation about the general fund, um, transfer. That has to do with the work that was done on Village Hall on the roof that was damaged. And the issue just is that last fiscal year, we received the money from the insurance company, and this fiscal year, we received the bill. So they, there's just that little offset that.
So we 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 receive, we receive the money last fiscal year, and now we're paying it out this fiscal year. Okay, all right, so it's a, it nets, and that's zero, so to speak.
Exactly.
Okay, that's great. And do you know the sort, the Water Fund, is that, um, is that equipment that they need?
It's just that I noticed that we were getting close in the purification. We haven't actually gone over budget, but we're we're getting close, and what I did was I looked at it and I thought. Um, that at this point, we're a third of the year, of the way through the year. And so I thought it looks like the Source of Supply Code had a little bit extra. If you, you know, feel like that third represents the other two thirds of the year to come. And the purification is a little bit light, so I just pulled it over. That's all.
Okay, so you moved it from one budget line to another?
Exactly.
Okay, all right, great, thank you. All right, um, with that being said, um, we, uh, will go for closing comments. Uh, any trustees, uh, wish to comment?
I don't have anything.
Anything for the Deputy Mayor, Trustee Brooke? Trustee Sherr, we're moving right along this evening. Okay, uh, that being said, any public comment? Any anybody? Yes?
I'm gonna try my name.
Uh, no, I'm just gonna let you announce who you are, cuz I know I'll get it wrong every time.
I just had two quick comments.
Sure.
Um, I had a plumber at my house for an unrelated issue, but he wanted to, he made me promise to tell you guys how great the DPW was here and how wonderful they are, so.
I'm sorry, Jeff left.
It's like, huh, let me praise you. Um, and then the other thing, of course, is the path. I've been working with Trustee Brooke. Um, but there's a couple little issues, like maintenance of the path, uh, leading to my house. I've been told repeatedly not to touch it. It's the town's property.
Village.
A village property. I I call it a city, a town, it's a village.
You came from a city and now you live in a village.
Okay, with the village, yes. Uh, and so I just wanted to request wherever I need to officially to ask that the maintenance, that us, the park maintenance, uh. Takes care of that path until we find, um, a lot more long-term solution.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. We'll take that under advisement. Anybody online, uh, have any, uh, further, uh, public comment? Okay, seeing none. Uh, it's time to enter into executive session. Uh, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees leave the public meeting and enter into executive session at. Oh, eight, eight o'clock. Uh, to discuss, uh, attorney's advice and and leave, uh, attorney's advice with respect to a land donation. A floral request and an employee, an employee benefits issue, and then finally a water account matter. Uh, I make the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Trustee Brooke. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right, so, uh, we're back in public session. We have, uh, two resolutions. The first resolution concerns, uh, the Water Department. And, uh, an issue of the condition of the water main running from East Lake to, uh, the end of Crow's Nest Road. So be it resolved that the Water Department is authorized to expend the sum of three thousand dollars. Uh, to conduct a, uh, leak study for that length of, uh, water main from East Lake to the end of Crow's Nest Road. Uh, do I have a second for that resolution?
Second.
Second by the Deputy Mayor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Oppo, uh, passes unanimously. Okay, last item on the agenda. Pull it out. This involves a, uh, a proposed donation of a piece of land in the vicinity of the South Gate. By an anonymous donor. Uh, it comprises approximately four acres. Uh, it is a very generous donation at a gateway entrance to the park that, uh, the village. If we accept this property, can be preserved as open space. And I would make the following motion. Whereas the owner of the property has offered to donate vacant property in the town of Tuxedo to the village. Which property is known as Section two one four, Lot one, Lot sixteen point one on the tax map of the town of Tuxedo. And whereas the property is proposed to be donated to the village unconditionally. Now therefore, the village accepts the unconditional donation and will use the land for municipal purposes. This donation is subject to an inspection of the property and to a title search. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Brooke. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Josh?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, thank you, folks. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees adjourn, uh, at eight. Thirty P M. Do I have a second? Or by Trustee Brooke, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, folks. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Good night. Take care.
Bye.